Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. So, do we need a roll call?
No.
No. Okay. So, we will go on to minutes for approval, the executive minutes of September 16, 2015. Do I have a motion?
I'll move him.
Thank you, Carmella. A second? Mr. Rowe. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. I am standing in for Mayor Connolly today, and I'm going to make a few announcements on his behalf. One of the first ones, I'm very proud to say, Drew University, Dr. William Campbell received a Nobel Prize in Physiology or Medicine for 2015, and he shared half the award jointly with Satoshi Omuro for their discoveries concerning a novel therapy against infections caused by roundworm parasites. Apparently, they've completely wiped out this disease as a result. The other half of the award went to UU2 for her discoveries concerning a novel therapy against malaria, but this is our own, very own professor from Drew University who received this prize. Bottle Hill Day is going to happen Saturday, October 24th, as well as the art auction gala as part of the ceremonies. And our acting captain, Joe Sorrella, of the Madison Police Department was not only the grand marshal of the Columbus Day Parade in East Hanover, but also the New York City Columbus Day Parade. The Madison PBA Local 92 will be having a fundraiser for Joe to assist him and his family as he undergoes treatment for stage IV colon cancer. I don't know whether all of you are aware of that. It will be held this Friday, October 16th, at 6:00 PM at the North Star Club, 95 North Street, Madison. Under anniversaries, longevity here at the Borough, Nancy Adamcheck, Director of the Madison Public Library, we congratulate her on her 45th anniversary as of October 1st, 45 years serving the Borough. And then James Sedano of the Department of Public Works is serving 35 years on October 14th, which is today. And from the Madison Public Library, we have a report on how the construction is going. The HVAC replacement project at the library began Monday, October 5th. It appears to be progressing close to schedule, but we are not able to reopen the -- they weren't able to reopen the library last weekend as planned, as the ceiling removal took longer than expected. The delayed reopening gave the library, though, time to complete a first cleaning of the public areas. The library's hours for the rest of October will be as follows: Monday through Thursday, 3:00 to 9:00 PM; Friday, 3:00 to 6:00 PM; Saturday, 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM; and Sunday, 1:00 to 5:00 PM. And we are also anticipating another closing for one week in November for the construction. Meanwhile, the program programming does continue. This Saturday, we're featuring bones and scones at 2:00 PM. It will be an afternoon tea, scones, and murder mystery. And the children's room will continue with its schedule of activities for children of all ages. And from the Chamber of Commerce, it's time for a little spook, some magic, and lots of trick-or-treaters. The Chamber is sponsoring the 2015 Halloween Hoopla on Saturday, October 31st, starting at 12:15 PM. Children and their parents are invited to attend a Halloween costume parade, followed by a magic show and trick-or-treating in the downtown business area. So, for first, we have at 12:15 the Halloween Parade. We began at Green Village Road Field on King's Road, and that will start at 12:30 and finish at Waverly Place. From 1:00 to 1:30 is the magic show. This will be held on the corner of Lincoln Place and Waverly. In case of rain, the show will be held inside the gym at the Madison Junior School, 160 Main Street. Trick-or-treating begins at 1:30, continues until 3:00. Children in costume are invited to trick-or-treat through the downtown business district. Participating stores will display a bright orange and black jack-o'-lantern in their windows. And that is it, except that one more message from the Chamber. They will be conducting fire extinguisher inspections Tuesday, October 20th, from 12:00 to 4:00 PM at the corner of Central and Main Street. $15 per inspection, $10 if you're a Chamber member. So, that is it for the mayor's report, and we will now have -- another part of the mayor's report is we're going to have awards to the police officers, firefighters, and ambulance corps volunteers. This will be given by Councilman Bob Landrigan, who is also captain of the ambulance corps.
Historically, the ambulance corps has given awards to its members when they've done -- have had a save, you know, typically a CPR save. We've only done it internally because, quite frankly, due to patient confidentiality, we can't find out whether the patient actually survived or not. However, this time, it's very different. That patient is actually sitting in this room right now, and it's because of the life-saving efforts of not only his family, but also of ambulance corps members, firefighters, and police officers that he is here today. At this time, I would like to give a little scenario of what happened, so you get a better feel for the interaction between the people. A call went out -- I was on duty about -- it was late August. A call went out for a man down. CPR in progress by a family member. He arrived there. The police had already begun their life-saving measures. When they turned that patient over to the ambulance corps and firefighters, who arrived simultaneously, they gave a report that any hospital would be glad to hear. It was concise to the point. When they turned that patient over to us, they immediately went to take care of and render aid to the patient's family. That patient was then transported to the hospital. En route, he started to show signs of improvement. Later on that night, we had another call. Now, I can't go into a hospital and ask what's going on with that patient. They're not allowed to tell me. But what I did do was peek into that room, and he wasn't there. So, right away, you say, "Oh, my God, what happened? Was something bad?" I asked the charge nurse, and she said he was moved up to intensive care. Now, for most of us here, going to intensive care is a bad thing. In this case, it was very good news, because that means there was hope, and that's what we want. It was hope. The way this call was handled was textbook. It should be -- it is a great example of what they call continuity of care, passing along of care. There was no glory. Nobody was looking for glory. Nobody was looking for recognition. Everybody did their job perfectly, and it's because of that work that this person is here today. And later on, he has said that he wants to come up and shake our hands. But right now, I would like to call up the first responders who responded to that call. Firefighters Jack Dunn, Drew Acherson, and Evan Webb, come on up. Police officers Patrolman Duraco and Corporal Delaval, and from what I understand, Patrolman Mirabella can't be here tonight. And accepting the award for Nancy Napolitano from the ambulance corps, who was on duty tonight, will be our President John Dorn. Each one of these men deserve a great deal of credit. Like I said, there was no ego. They did their job professionally, and it's because of their hard work that this person is alive. But there's one other person I'd like to call up right now. Remember at the beginning of my little story, I said life-saving efforts will be done by a family member? Well, that person is Hunter Peralta, the grandson. So, Hunter, why don't you come up as well?
Thank you. In this box is what we want to hear.
Thank you. If you'll notice, on some of the police officers, above their badge, they have what they call a citation bar. What I have in this box is a citation bar. It says CPR save. It may be small, but the value it carries is immense, because they truly saved a life, and it's something we all should be proud of.
Here is your clerk. Yes. Okay. Right. Okay. I'm really proud to be in a community like Madison. It's a great place. We're very, very lucky. Could I have a motion for Resolution 283-2015?
So, moved?
Second?
A second.
Thank you. Will the clerk read the resolution into the record?
Resolution of the Borough of Madison confirming membership of Daniel Hutton in the Madison Hose Company Number One.
Thank you. And can we have a motion for R. 284-2015?
So, moved.
A second?
Second.
Thank you. And can we read that into the record?
Resolution of the Borough of Madison confirming membership of Colin Scarpello in the Madison Hose Company Number One.
Okay. And do we need a vote?
And roll call.
So, we will have a roll call for those two resolutions.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Okay. So, would Daniel Hutton and Colin Scarpello please come forward, and we'll administer the oath of office? And anybody who's going to be reading the Bible for you, family members, if you've got family here, they're old enough, come on up.
Who are we going to do first?
You're going to leave the baby here. I have experience.
Astrid, who do you want to do first?
You do this.
Why are you asking me?
Daniel Hutton first. And you're Daniel? Okay. So, are we holding the Bible? Okay. I think you can stand over there. However, you want to do it. Okay. So, please repeat after me. I, Daniel Hutton?
Aye, Daniel Hutton.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully?
That I will faithfully.
Impartially?
Impartially.
And justly perform?
And justly perform.
All the duties?
All the duties.
Of volunteer firefighter Madison Hose Company Number One?
Of volunteer firefighter Madison Hose Company Number One.
According to the best of my abilities?
According to the best of my abilities.
I further solemnly swear?
I further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance?
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same?
To the same.
And to the governments?
And to the governments.
Established in the United States?
Established in the United States.
And in this state?
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people.
So, help me God.
So, help me God.
Okay. We just need you to stop. Good. Okay. You're going to put your right hand there. You're going to -- and repeat after me. I, Colin Scarpello?
Aye, Colin Scarpello.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully?
That I will faithfully.
Impartially?
Impartially.
And justly perform?
And justly perform.
All the duties of?
All the duties of.
Volunteer firefighter Madison Hose Company One?
Volunteer firefighter Madison Hose Company One.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
I further solemnly swear?
I further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance?
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same?
To the same.
And to the governments?
And to the governments.
Established in the United States?
Established in the United States.
And in this state?
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people.
So, help me God.
So, help me God.
Okay. We just need you to stop. Good. Okay. You're going to put your right hand there. You're going to -- and repeat after me. I, Colin Scarpello?
Aye, Colin Scarpello.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully?
That I will faithfully.
Impartially?
Impartially.
And justly perform?
And justly perform.
All the duties of?
All the duties of.
Volunteer firefighter Madison Hose Company One?
Volunteer firefighter Madison Hose Company One.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
I further solemnly swear?
I further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance?
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same?
To the same.
And to the governments?
And to the governments.
Established in the United States?
Established in the United States.
And in this state?
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people.
So, help me God.
So, help me God.
Okay. We just need you to stop. Good. Okay. You're going to put your right hand there. You're going to -- and repeat after me. I, Colin Scarpello?
Aye, Colin Scarpello.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully?
That I will faithfully.
Impartially?
Impartially.
And justly perform?
And justly perform.
All the duties?
All the duties.
Of volunteer firefighter Madison Hose Company Number One?
Of volunteer firefighter Madison Hose Company Number One.
According to the best of my abilities?
According to the best of my abilities.
I further solemnly swear?
I further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance?
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same?
To the same.
And to the governments?
And to the governments.
Established in the United States?
Established in the United States.
And in this state?
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people.
So, help me God.
So, help me God.
Okay. We just need you to stop. Good. Okay. You're going to put your right hand there. You're going to -- and repeat after me. I, Colin Scarpello?
Aye, Colin Scarpello.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully?
That I will faithfully.
Impartially?
Impartially.
And justly perform?
And justly perform.
All the duties of?
All the duties of.
Volunteer firefighter Madison Hose Company One?
Volunteer firefighter Madison Hose Company One.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
I further solemnly swear?
I further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance?
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same?
To the same.
And to the governments?
And to the governments.
Established in the United States?
Established in the United States.
And in this state?
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people.
So, help me God.
So, help me God.
Okay. Congratulations. Volunteers.
Thank you, sir.
And we love to see new volunteers for our fire department. Thank you so much.
Okay. Hmm? Pardon?
Oh, okay. We're going to just pause for a moment. Anybody would like to leave at this point? Feel free. We won't be offended.
Hello, sir. Nice to see you.
Okay. We will now have reports from committees, and we will start with public safety. Mr. Catalinello?
Thank you very much, Council President Bailey. Fire prevention week was the first full week of October. This year's national fire prevention theme is Hear the Beep Where You Sleep. Make sure to test your smoke alarm monthly and replace your batteries annually. The Madison Fire Prevention Bureau will be visiting all grades K through 8 during the month of October to promote fire safety. Programs are geared to each age group. The fire department responded in September, 127 calls for assistance, 42 of which were EMS-related. Chief Lou DeRosa will be giving a historical talk on the evolution of Madison's fire apparatus on Tuesday evening, October 20th, in the EOC located on the second floor of the public safety complex, and it starts promptly at 7:15. This is sponsored by the Madison Historical Society and is open to the public. Admission is free. Come early to see some of the many historical items of the fire department, which will be on display, including Geraldine. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I'm not -- Council President Bailey.
That's okay. Utilities. Mrs. Vitale?
Thank you. This is a report from the electric department. They began transferring residential service to a new secondary cable on Greenwood Avenue and reconfiguring transformer locations in that same area. They removed existing three-phase transformer bank and installed two single-phase transformers on Green Avenue, also installed the second new pole and anchor for the new housing development. Completed repairs on Bank 4A at James Park Substation and re-energized. Of course, they continue to do service upgrades and removals and mark-out requests. Report from the water department. Water samples were taken for the state mandated testing. E-well development is still in progress, and the generator is ordered. Will be repairing a new valve at the intersection of Central and Cook Avenue on Monday, 10:19. They are installing a new service on Highview Terrace for the installation of a new park that was donated by Cardinal Landscaping Sprinkler System. And if you want to see something nice, go take a look at it. It just looks absolutely great there. It's a nice addition. So, thank you to Cardinal for donating all of that work as well.
Okay. Thank you. Finance and Borough Clerk, Mr. Landrigan.
Thank you. The tax assessor just completed her review of all properties approved in Madison in 2015 through September 30th, and determined that an additional $35 million can be added to the Borough's rateable base for 2016. The affected property owners have been notified, and they will have until December 1st to appeal their added assessment. The largest addition was $8.1 million to the former Maersk Headquarters building at Geraldine Farms. The Green Village Road School redevelopment project is getting near to a closing date. Two approvals are outstanding, one from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for a water main extension permit, and the other is final approval from the Morris County Planning Board. The latest possible closing date is December 1st under legal documents. If approvals are received earlier, the closing will happen earlier. At closing, the Board of Ed will receive $9 million and the Borough $1 million. The $1 million from the Green Village Road proceeds, plus a $500 grant from Green Acres, will allow the Borough to retire the $1.9 million MRC note in February 2016. In regards to the upcoming election, for the November 3rd general election, all Madison polling locations will be open from 6:00 AM until 8:00 PM on Election Day. Vote-by-mail ballots are available in the Borough Clerk's office or online at MorrisElections.org. Registered voters who cannot get to the polls can vote in person at the county clerk's office up until 3:00 PM the day before the election, November 2nd. And if anybody has any additional questions, please contact the Borough Clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. Health, Mr. Wolkowitz.
Thank you. You may recall at a previous meeting, I had mentioned that the Health Department is running a flu clinic. It is that time when seasonal flu vaccines are recommended by the Center for Disease Control and Prevention. Today was the first of the two clinics, and the turnout was light. So, I hope you're all getting your inoculations elsewhere. It's something that's highly recommended, and if indeed you just forgot about it or would like to do it, there will be another clinic on Wednesday, October 21st, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. It will be held at the Health Department, and you're asked to call the Health Department in advance to indicate that you will be coming. If you're covered by Medicare, please bring your Medicare card with you. In addition, on Wednesday, November 9th, will be Women's Health Screening Day, and all women ages -- over the age of 18 who live in either Madison, Chatham Borough, or Chatham Township, or Springfield are invited to come. And depending on what tests they are recommended to have, there may be a fee of $25, but that would be the maximum amount you would have to pay. On a slightly different note, the mayor's asked me to update you on a resolution we had passed recently, which authorized the sending of a letter to our political representatives on the federal, state, and local levels to ask them to get behind an effort to improve train service. We've heard many complaints about the inadequacy of the service. We know that it was a low point this summer, and for a lot of reasons, we continue to be quite concerned. The passage of the resolution elicited a response before we got the letter out, and as a result, the mayor and I met with John Delcoli, who's our regional representative from New Jersey Transit, and also a couple of members of the Friends of the Madison Train Station. We had what I would call a straightforward and honest exchange of views, and they pointed out -- John pointed out to us that NJ Transit would love to have better equipment and has a lot of things planned, but they're receiving a good deal less money than they had in the past. An unfortunate story that we hear over and over again. At any rate, as a result of the meeting, we have modified the letter somewhat that the mayor will be sending out to indicate that we've had a long and productive relationship with NJ Transit. However, there are some issues still outstanding and seem to be getting worse that need to be resolved to improve the commute to New York City. So, as I said, the mayor asked me to update you all on this, and I think it's a step in the right direction. Clearly, it gets some attention, because, as I say, we had a meeting even before we had the letter out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolkowitz. Public Works and Engineering, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you. Public Works, the leaf collection will start on October 26th, and bags will be available at the Borough Garage starting next Monday, October 9th. We strongly encourage everyone to pick some up, and please utilize them this fall. From the Engineering Department, Roads, Savelli Construction has completed milling of the southern half of Ridgedale and will be paving tomorrow. Once striping has been completed, the project will essentially be done. New Jersey Department of Transportation Municipal Aid Application for Prospect Street has been submitted, and we hope to land a quarter of a million dollar grant for this half million dollar project. For Dodge Memorial Fields, the existing stations and lighting for the basketball courts at Dodge Field have been replaced by Musco and Quality Electric. We expect to complete the connection to Madison Electric this week, and a court resurfacing project is proposed soon thereafter as part of the maintenance repairs. The drainage improvement project at Memorial Field is scheduled to start this month. Its costs will be covered by the Open Space Fund. And the state's National Recreational Trail staff are reviewing a $24,000 grant request for the Madison Recreation Complex that was submitted by the Borough Engineer. And finally, for sewers, the combined 2014 and 2015 sewer lining projects are complete. Both came in under budget. Thank you very much, Madam Council President.
Thank you. Communications and petitions.
Yes. The council received two communications since our last meeting. An email dated October 5th from Danielle Schmidt of Cook Avenue regarding parking spaces in the Cook Avenue parking lot, and a letter dated October 9th from Sam Pacolo of Central Avenue regarding a private hedge on Central Avenue at Dodge Field.
Thank you. We now have invitation for discussion. This is the first of two invitations to the public for discussions concerning items on the agenda or the resolutions. of the southern half of Ridgedale and will be paving tomorrow. Once striping has been completed, the project will essentially be done. New Jersey Department of Transportation Municipal Aid Application for Prospect Street has been submitted and we hope to land a quarter of a million dollar grant for this half million dollar project. For Dodge and Memorial Fields, the existing stations and lighting for the basketball courts at Dodge Field have been replaced by Musco and Quality Electric. We expect to complete the connection to Madison Electric this week and a court resurfacing project is proposed soon thereafter as part of the maintenance repairs. The Drainage Improvement Project at Memorial Field is scheduled to start this month. Its costs will be covered by the Open Space Fund. And the State's National Recreational Trail staff are reviewing a $24,000 grant request for the Madison Recreation Complex that was submitted by the Borough Engineer. And finally, for sewers, the combined 2014 and 2015 sewer lining projects are complete. Both came in under budget. Thank you very much, Madam Council President.
Communications and petitions.
Yes, the council received two communications since our last meeting. An email dated October 5th from Danielle Schmidt of Cook Avenue regarding parking spaces in the Cook Avenue parking lot and a letter dated October 9th from Sam Baccolo of Central Avenue regarding a private hedge on Central Avenue at Dodge Field.
Thank you. We now have invitation for discussion. This is the first of two invitations to the public for discussions concerning items on the agenda or the resolutions. Any of the ordinances that are for hearing, you will be able to discuss any issues during the hearing on the ordinances. Okay? So, this is for agenda items and we have none and/or resolutions tonight. Okay. Mr. Harlan Pudus. I'm good. Thanks.
Hello, everybody. Tom Harlan Pudus, 27 Palmeroy Road. I got up here a few weeks ago to discuss with you and bring to your attention some of the issues that I see and the safety challenges that I see with one of the ordinances you're passing in about...
Okay. So, Mr. Harlan Pudus...
Oh, no?
Yeah. This is the time only for agenda resolutions and you're going to be...
It's on the first page.
If you just, no, no, no. If you sit tight for three seconds, you're going to be able to participate in the hearing on what you want to talk about.
I'll say my name again when I come in.
Yes. And then you have to also write your name and address for the record. Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? All right. We will now go to ordinances for hearing. Borough Clerk, please.
Okay. Ordinance 49, 2015, scheduled for hearing, was introduced by title and passed on a first reading at the regular meeting of the council held on Wednesday, September 16th. Ordinance 50, 2015, and 51, 2015, were introduced by title and passed on a first reading at the regular council meeting held on Monday, September 28th, 2015. All were posted and filed according to law and copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
Okay. So, we are going to call up ordinances for second reading and the clerk will read said ordinances by title. Ordinance 49-2015.
Ordinance, the Borough of Madison, amending Chapter 185-32 of the Borough Code to include time limit restrictions for parking on Burnett Road, Canterbury Road, Buckingham Drive, Avon Drive, and Troy Court.
I'm going to open the hearing. This is the time for discussion. Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record and please print your name and address and like to hold comments to more or less three minutes.
Tom Harlan Pudus, 27 Palmeroy Road. I already told you that I was up here before, so I don't have to repeat that. So, I will say that I'm up here because I'm a little, I was concerned before and I expressed that concern. I even had the pleasure of having a meeting with some of the representatives from the borough to discuss this change in the parking situation around the high school. The issues that I brought to everybody's attention and there was agreement during the meeting that there are challenges with the alternative parking spots that you want to give the young drivers at the high school. And there's a few people up here on the council who actually, or at least up here, who have some children who might be affected by it. So, Rob has a son who's going to be driving there someday and Jim Burnett has a daughter who's probably going to be driving next year and he'll be happy that she'll be driving herself to school and she should have somewhere safe to park. I don't disagree that Burnett is probably challenging for the neighbors and for the town to deal with, but it has been a place for students to park during school days when Pat's kids were there. I don't know if Ben's there. Your kids, when they were, did they go to the high school?
You know, yes, my children did go to the high school and the number of kids who actually drove to the school wasn't as great as it is today.
Might have been different, but at one point, the school was 20% larger.
I know, but we couldn't afford carts. And there was a lot of carpooling.
It's possible.
So, it was, they were in the parking lot. We were in the parking lot. We never, we didn't even know where Burnett Road was, just so you know for the record.
No, I'm sure there was a few kids that found their way over there.
Okay. Go ahead.
But I understand we have to change with the times. And the point that I had tried to make before was before we actually institute the ordinance and make the change, I felt that we should have a safe place for the children, the students to go for an alternative parking place. And my assessment is that the MRC is not the safest place to send our students to park. The consideration that I had pointed out was that the MRC is a place where even though the police do monitor it with video surveillance, by the time anybody could respond to something, there could be a situation that, and that doesn't say that you can't respond, the same thing can't happen on Burnett, but there's more traffic. There's opportunities in a parking lot that's unsupervised for students maybe to get into something that's inappropriate. You have from December through March, very short days, there's a lot of students that stay after school for activities and they would have to walk anywhere from seven to 10 minutes by themselves to get back to that parking lot. We also have challenges clearing the streets and sidewalks now when we have extreme weather like we had last year. So, this would just pose more issues, I think, for the borough and the Board of Ed to clear. You also have to consider that right now, there wouldn't be any lighting unless you also anticipate putting lighting along the path. I just don't think that's the best alternative for the students. And I don't have a student who it affects right now. So, I'm not concerned right this second about my student and by the time my daughter gets to the driving age or to that age, she'll probably be able to park because she has a very late birthday. But I just think for the students in general, which are all your kids, right? They live in your borough. I think that we should make some consideration for their safety before closing off Burnett and making them go there. And in addition to that, this is another consideration. From what I understand, the cost of the project is anywhere from $40,000 to $50,000. By the time you put in your path and the Board of Ed puts in their path, maybe some lighting, maybe some additional surveillance, video surveillance, which we talked about at our meeting, and then the cost of maintaining the path and the MRC parking lot annually. So, as far as I know, we're pretty tight on money in this borough because every time I ask for a utility break, we're not getting a utility break. Oh, Jim? No, you're hiding your face over there. Okay. So, I know that, I know there's reasons for everything. So, I had made a suggestion, which I thought was viable and maybe it's still under consideration. We bought the MRC property, 50 acres. We paid $13 million for it. We paid $250,000 an acre for that piece of property and we built some beautiful fields there, but we also inherited some contaminated space over there. So, there's probably five acres that's contaminated, probably over a million dollars of land that's sitting fenced in now. It's an eyesore. For the people who really know what transpired, it's even more haunting because we could have maybe done something at the time to avoid spending the money on the contaminated property. But anyway, so when you drive into the MRC now, on the left side, there's a fenced-in area. It's over an acre of land, probably could park 100 cars there. The MRC during busy weekends has overflow parking that ends up on the grass along the driveway. I've taken some pictures. I've sent pictures to Jim and some of the safety officers, so they know what I'm talking about. It's not necessarily a hazard, but it's something that we don't need to have there. And we also have, we also have the passive recreation people who have asked for some additional facility at the MRC. It could be a paddle court. It could be some extra basketball courts. So, you have this whole space there on the left side, which is only about a four-minute walk. I walked it myself. You walk up to the street and then there's a sidewalk that goes from the MRC driveway all the way to the high school. It's not very long. It's about 400 feet. So, you could, and I already checked with the gentleman who was on the Environmental Commission with me, Roy Redmond, and you can cap that with just QP and gravel. You don't even have to asphalt it, which would be sufficient for parking. You can remove the fence then. That would satisfy the contamination. I checked Pat. I checked with him already and you guys can ask him. I already started some dialogue with Mr. Vogel and Roy also.
I think, I think in our discussion, it will come out that there, some of the issues you're talking about have been resolved and the numbers you're talking about are less. And the borough is planning to continue to pursue remediation of that land so it can be actually used and not covered over permanently so we can protect water supply and recharge areas. So...
Like five years, Ms. Bailey.
I'm aware of that. It's a slow, it's a slow process. Also, the property was purchased not only with borough money, but with a tremendous amount of grant money from the state and the county.
I'm not saying that we paid for it.
Okay.
Somebody paid the Rock Group, $13 million.
Right.
And part of it is for contaminated land.
I understand.
So, we don't have to go there now. I'm just making a point that we have an eyesore there right now.
I see.
That we could do something about, I think. And it would, it would resolve two situations. Instead of taking the students from the high school and telling them to go park in the MRC all winter long, you did make some suggestions to the Board of Ed to add parking and I know that they're considering that, but they're going to spend money on it and they're going to spend our money on it. And if we can get a multipurpose parking lot that will help the borough and the Board of Ed in a different place and remove that fence, I think that it's something that should be considered and it's closer to the school also. That street is always cleared. You don't have to go clear a separate parking lot in the winter. You're always clearing that driveway down there because there's people using the Exxon property.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Thank you. Please come on up, state your name for the record. Please sign in.
Hello. Sharad Gupta, 25 Buckingham Drive. On the same topic, while I don't disagree with Tom's potential solution, I do disagree with some of the safety things that he brought up. The bulk of the parking issues on Burnett typically happen in the spring, not necessarily in the winter months when it's very dark out. And that's typically when we do have more daylight time. So, I think some of those issues do go away when the problem occurs. With the Board of Ed adding the 40-plus parking spots, I think that's enough buffer to take us through those winter months that occurs. I'd like to talk about the last six weeks. The last six weeks with no students parking on Burnett, I think is a good indication of what that street can be. Students that walk to school have no issues crossing the street. They're not dodging in between cars. Parents that drop off their kids on Burnett Street do not have to double park to drop their kids off. They're able to pull up to the ramp, drop off, and be on their way. And the reology traffic is flowing. It's nice. It's not a cumbersome situation. So, I think all those things together lead to making a move on this for the positive. It's been, it's been many years now where we've had 50 to 80 cars parked there and it's just a parking lot from 8:00 to 2:00. It's a mess. We have several residents from the neighborhood that are in the audience today that are also in agreement with this. You know, maybe the MRC is not the ultimate solution. I think we talked about that. The best solution would be a parking lot at the high school, but that's going to take time. And I don't know how long we can wait before something happens on Burnett Street. As far as, I did hear that some people were concerned about the walk. Students parked down as far as North Street. Used a little app on my phone, did a little walking. From North Street to the high school entrance is .33 miles. From the MRC to the high school entrance is .35 miles along the proposed pathway. So, from the furthest point, obviously, if they get a closer spot on Burnett, it's less.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Others who would like to comment on this issue?
Jeff Sarret, I'm 93 Garfield. I have two students at the high school. One's a junior, one's a freshman. I know, I definitely feel for the residents of that whole section as far as parking goes, but I do know that a lot of the things that Mr. Harlan Pudus said, I think I take to heart as well. My son last year was driven to school by another student. They parked on Burnett every day. They had an easy walk and now I know he's very concerned. I understand that talking about putting a path in and maybe making it a little better to get through. Right now, I don't see how in adverse conditions you can get from MRC to the high school in a good way. My only proposal, knowing that it's a sensitive issue, is I don't understand why all of Burnett needs to be cartoned off the way it is. If we're putting, if MRC is going to be put in place as a temporary solution, why not also allow some parking, maybe limit what's in the neighborhood? You're now just basically taking a neighborhood that allowed parking and now making it no parking. I don't understand why we're going to a full extreme. I know that would be nice. I'm sure it's been very nice now for the residents that parking is probably been much easier with no one parking there, but from a student perspective, as we know, starting now and all the way through June, more and more students are going to be, juniors are now getting their licenses and this is where it starts getting a little more difficult. And if we're going to be putting in some temporary solutions, I'm still not clear why we need to totally cut off a side of access to the high school. And so, I just would like the council to at least consider that taking this action. I'm not aware of, I understand this congestion. I understand it doesn't appear to be the most optimal condition the way it's been, but I'm also have not heard of, you know, multiple accidents or multiple things going on. Maybe I'm mistaken. If that's, if I'm mistaken about that, then, you know, I apologize. But it seems like we're taking a condition that has been not great and just trying to find a half-hour solution to another not-great condition. I don't see why we're not, why we're taking extreme measures just immediately, but this is going to have an impact on the students, on their safety. And it's not just a matter of the safety. Yes, a parking lot's a dark place and there could be a lot of issues there. It's the walk. I mean, I'm still unclear how this path is going to go. I've looked at those maps. I've looked at aerial views before I came here.
Okay.
And I just want the council to consider that there might be other alternatives that taking the extreme measure of zero parking seems a little, seems a little much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay. Are we going to have a police report? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, police, I didn't see your, thank you.
I'm Pat Sullivan. I'm at 76 Palmeroy and I also have a son that will be driving next year and as well as a daughter who's a freshman, so I feel it'll be affected. And I, you know, I have, I have, you know, sympathy for the people that do live in that area. You know, it's got to be bad news with all the cars going in, but and just, just one quick suggestion, since I kind of agree with what Tom Harlan Pudus said as well as Jeff. Well, the one suggestion I'm going to give is just a suggestion my son gave me and I think he also told some of the administrators at the school. He said, "Well, if the high school, you know, they obviously own that land and there's a lot of room behind the bleachers, what about..." It's kind of a simple suggestion, but I'm going to give it to you. Cutting a little area in there to have diagonal parking on Burnett. You know, I know that the biggest concern for the residents there is the safety of kids cutting through the cars. If they were to, high school was to use some of that land, just simply cut in diagonal parking, that could be another, you know, suggestion for a solution. So...
Thank you.
All right.
Right. Yes.
I'm Thomas Rude. I live at 57 Canterbury, right on the corner of Burnett. And I think one of the issues that we haven't talked about yet is the safety and the reality of what's going on right now. On Burnett, we do not have a sidewalk for the kids to walk on. So, when it gets snowed in on the side and the kids are parking their cars and a lot less of the road, where are the kids actually walking to get to the high school? Are they walking on the snow or are they walking on the road? Now, we know that that road is getting a lot more traffic now that the area by reology, it's getting built up a little bit more, so I think those are some issues that we haven't talked about. And I agree, we got to look at some parking over in MRC and some more room there, but if safer to walk on the road or safer to walk on a sidewalk that may be plowed?
Okay.
Or a new sidewalk over at the MRC?
Thank you very much. Okay. So, we were going to hear from our police department also.
Well, I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. You all have some very good solutions, but I don't want to mistake convenience for safety. Okay? We all realize that the best solution is onsite parking. Okay? We all agree to that. The best solution for this time is, that's my belief. This is the best solution for this time period. Hopefully, in the future, there will be a time when maybe we can urge the Board of Ed to install that onsite parking. I mean, like I said, I can't stress it enough, that's the best solution. But I don't want to change anything for safety or convenience. I would rather have my child, I'm a father, I have twins, they're only four. I have a lot of years before they drive, but I understand. I understand your concern. Have to look at probabilities. Okay? We, I've heard about, you know, it's a longer walk, it's dark. I think there's more of a probability of a student getting struck by a car on Burnett Road than someone jumping out of the woods at the MRC. So, we have to look at probabilities. I take the safety of your children, just like I do mine, because I consider them my children, okay? Here to protect them. And I feel that this is the best solution at this point. I know, you know, it comes down to money and building a parking lot or building a wall on Burnett Road to angle park in the bleachers is some good ideas, but for the mean, for the immediacy of this, I think the MRC is the best solution until we can come up with something more permanent.
Please identify who you are. Thank you.
My name's Joseph Longo. I'm the sergeant in charge of the Traffic Safety Bureau.
Thank you. Thank you.
If I had a magic wand, I'd wave it right now and solve the problem, but I think the perfect solution would be a large parking lot on the corridor by the tennis courts. That would make everyone, a lot of people, very, very happy. This is great dialogue. You see a lot of problems come before mayor and council and it's, you know, a bunch of bickering, but everyone handles it professionally. So, I'll tell you this with your, with everyone in this room from both sides of the fence, completely solvable. This is solvable. The chief hit me on the head. You know, the MRC parking lot is not the best solution, but it's what we have right now. If you've been on Burnett Road, Burnett's Road's a cut through to Park Avenue, reology, plus the jets and all the building going on over there. So, with that being said, snow time, kids do walk up the center of the roadway like the gentleman in the back said. And have we had accident history, Mayor? No, we've had one vehicle verse bicyclist and that was in 2011. Other than that, there's no accident history, but as the chief said, we don't need to have an accident history. Myself and my traffic partner were out there observing. It, you know, it's potential for an accident to happen. So, yes, you know, if I had a million dollars, I would build a parking lot and everyone would be happy, but I think, you know, with the dialogue we had here tonight, this is solvable. And we have something called the Shared Committee between the borough...
Shared Services Committee.
Shared Services Committee between the borough and the schools. You know, if we keep the topic on for onsite parking, maybe we can get it done.
It actually is. The resolution R291 is awarding the contract for the sidewalks and it explains, and I think the next person we'll have talk is Mr. Rowe and Mrs. Vitale about the Shared Services Committee and the result of that resulted in this resolution.
My counterpart, Chad, he was at that meeting.
Okay.
I could not attend, but, you know, this is solvable.
Yeah. And I think, I think the school board and the borough have come up with a good solution to add to and... a good solution to add to and perhaps correct some of the things that were said about the cost of the sidewalks. So Mr. Rowe and Mrs. Vitale, could you just comment on that now before we make a motion? What happened at the shared services meeting and the, and the resulting contract on the sidewalks?
Were you there?
Yes, I was there.
Were you there? Okay. Shared Services Committee consisted of Superintendent Rossi, Gary Lane, a representative there. I, I was there. Bob Landrigan is, is the liaison to that, that particular committee. And he couldn't make it. So I was there. We had a very in-depth discussion about this problem. And at the end of it, we all concluded that this was a very good solution to the problem at this point. One of the, one of the most important things, I think, also, is that the principal at the high school was in, absolutely thought that this was a great solution. What Ms. Bailey is referring to is that there is a resolution tonight that's Resolution 291, which is a construction of a cement path that will lead from the MRC right directly to the school. We have decided as, as mayor and council that we will go ahead and get this done. And it'll be done probably within another month or so. The school board at that point said, we'll take care of it. We will maintain it. I made a suggestion, and I guess I could say this, and you know, it came out of executives, so don't tell anybody I'm telling you. But my suggestion was, is that our electric department run conduit at, you know, when they're putting in the sidewalk so that we can add lighting. You know, and that's going to be an easy fix. That'll be an easy fix for them. As long as we're opening up and we're grading, it'll, we might as well do something like that. I understand, I understand how everybody feels about this. But I also understand what it's like for the residents in that, that particular area. You know, I, and I think when we first start to talk about this, that people actually were more afraid for the safety of the kids and not so much traffic or whatever.
Carmella?
And it's kind of.
I think the mayor would, or the acting mayor would like you to wait until the hearing is over.
I just wanted you to do the shared services part to explain to, yeah, and then I was going to do a motion and then we'll have discussion by council.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's all right.
Okay.
I'll have plenty more.
I'm a newbie at this. I'm sorry. Okay. So if there isn't anybody else from the public, we will now have closed the hearing and have a motion for ordinance 49-2015. Moved?
Madam Council President, which I like the way that sounds, I move ordinance 49-2015.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Wolkowitz. Okay, now we'll have discussion. And you know what? We'll start with Mrs. Yes, I do.
Yes.
No, you don't have to go. You can start, start where you left off.
Okay. Now, I'm not, I'm not going to say much more about this, but we understand the safety of your children. My kids went to Madison High. I was very fortunate. They walked, you know, and nobody in my house got a car until they were out of college anyway. So I, you know, I understand. And one of the suggestions I had made was that if there cannot be a, a good solution to this problem, the Board of Education may have to think about changing their policy. And only seniors bring cars to school. That happens in a lot of schools. East Hanover, my granddaughter's in East Hanover, and she's a senior and she, she could bring a car and nobody else can. So there's a lot. And to your point, Tom, I want, I want to just make one point about, I know we got in, you got into a big discussion about the MRC and the contaminated land. We've talked in depth about all of this. This is one thing we want to do, but it comes down to, you know, $350,000. We need to surface that. So it's not something that's off the table. You know, and as Joe Longo said, you know, this is the, this is a solution for now. And we're, we're going to work towards making it better. And we're working through the Shared Services Committee as well.
Others on the council? Mr. Catalinello?
Thank you. Would you like to go first, Ben?
Oh.
No, go, please.
So the cost and the resolution is, it's, our share is 16, roughly 17. So what would the total cost be for the entire path? So it'll be, even though it's a longer distance, it'll be less from where it takes off to the?
Isn't ours longer? Ours is longer than theirs.
Really?
Yeah.
I see. Okay. So I'm going to vote against this ordinance. I agree with, with pretty much everything that Mr. Harold and Pudas has said. You know, I, I think that while parking at the high school may be the responsibility of the Board of Education, that when people pay their taxes, they write one check. And I think they're looking to us. They're looking for leadership. They don't understand whose responsibility is what. They just want to know that their kids can get to school on time with, you know, mud all over their shoes or slipping or breaking a leg or something. Okay? Or, and, you know, I, I do probability for a living. And I got to tell you, 11, 12 standard deviation, deviation events happen all the time. So while I respect the chief and his opinion immensely, I don't want to play, you know, God doesn't play dice with the universe. You know, I don't want to play dice with my kid's safety. You know, my son drives to school for full disclosure. He's six foot one. He weighs 200 pounds. He lifts weights. He's strong. Not concerned overly. If I had a five foot three setter, you know, on the volleyball team that was walking, you know, in the, after practice, December, January, that path without lighting, I'd be a little concerned. And I don't think it's something we have to take. I, I think that there has to be an interim solution. If we're going to pass this, then I really suggest that we delay the implementation of it to give our partners at the Board of Education a chance to come up with a rational parking plan. They are about to get a massive $9 million payment from the sale of property. So there should be some funds available. We're not talking about a million dollars for a parking lot. We're talking about $90,000, $100,000, which is a lot of money. Don't get me wrong, but it's not a million. And, and this way, you know, we will have served notice that we're going to pay attention to what the residents in the, in the area see as a valid safety concern. But at the same time, we're going to work toward a solution. And then if our partners at the Board of Education decide they're not going to do anything, well, then it's up to the voters to whether or not they bring them back. But, you know, I, I just don't see how cutting off, because I think there's about 25 or 28 spots left in the lot right now. And there are a bunch of seniors, my knucklehead son included, who haven't gotten a parking spot yet. So I promise you, tomorrow, most, if not all of them, are going to be gone. And, you know, kids start getting their driver's license, like my son did in November of their junior year. So this is going to be a, a problem in the winter. And I just don't think that, you know, you know, I just don't, I just don't see the path getting done. We know it's not going to be lighted. You know, we can pass this. Let's just give a little time. Let's give our partners at the Board of Ed time to make a rational decision, to actually do something about it. You know, that's my, that's what I think.
Thank you.
Seems like a common sense approach. You all pretty much just probably disagree, but that's fine.
No, I, I actually, I was going to say, I mean, had I spoken first, I couldn't have said this. But I agree with a, a good deal of what you said. One piece I take issue with, though, is that I, I've spent a lot of time trying to educate our residents as to where their tax money is allocated and who, who has the bigger chunk of it. And if they're concerned about their taxes, you know, who they should speak to about that. I have much the same feeling about this issue. When I, when it first came to the table, I wasn't quite sure about the implications of what this all meant. And I've taken some time to educate myself. In the first instance, I'm looking at Burnett Street. I'm asking the people who are charged with our safety what they feel the condition is on Burnett Street now. And they've told me that they believe it's a situation that needs to be resolved, that emergency vehicles may on certain occasions not be able to get through there. You know, it's, it's, it, the litany of what I heard suggests that it's more than an issue of just convenience for the, for the residents of that area. It really is a public safety issue. Now, on the other side of it, the Board of Ed is confronted with a problem. They don't have sufficient parking for the number of students who would like to have the space on their campus. So the question is what to do about it. Now, I asked the question as to why this path is being done. And I was told that if the parking were not an issue, we would still be considering paving the piece we're talking about in our ordinance, because that piece will contribute to the enjoyment of the MRC.
I agree 100%.
Okay. So whether, so to my way of thinking, whether it ends up being used for parking or just simply a better way to get to, I hope at some point, bleachers. And, and also we can cure the problem with mud collecting in that area and making it somewhat impassable when it rains, that we would have done a good thing. I have, since I hear this is basically a springtime concern, right? At, at least that's what I've been led to believe. If that, well, if that be the case, I would be certainly willing to talk about a postponement of the implementation of this. If that's not the case, you know, something obviously has to be done, it seems to me, before we can pass this, so that there is some provision made for the students, whether everyone thinks it's the appropriate one or not. They have, they're going to drive to school. They have to park their cars. We don't want them parking on Burnett Street. So where are they going to park them? And it's going to take a while to build a path. We're going to build our piece as it is. I'm, what I'm concerned about as I hear this is that although we have heard from parents, I'm not sure to what extent the Board of Ed has. Because apparently in the shared services meeting, they were agreeable to the solution that we discussed using the MRC and walking through this path. If that's unacceptable to parents, parents should be attending their meetings and telling them as much and coming up with a solution that's more acceptable to everyone. But I don't feel that we should turn our backs on what apparently is a public safety issue in the area of Burnett Street. And for that reason, I'm going to vote yes.
Any others on council? Mr. Landrigan and Mr. Rowe?
I'll probably echo a lot of what's been said already. But, you know, to me, you know, you talk about probability and rolling the dice and all that business. What I can tell you is this, a six foot one guy like your son walking in a parking lot probably wouldn't get hurt. A six foot one muscular guy crossing on Burnett and getting hit by a car?
He'd be dead.
He'd be dead. So when you weigh the odds and really what is overall best right now, and I stress right now, does better parking have to be provided? Yeah, we've all talked about that. But am I going to roll the dice and say, let the kids continue to walk out on Burnett with the winter coming, the snow and ice, walking in between cars? I can't see that. If I had my choice, well, my kids are no longer at home right now. But if they were driving to school, where would I'd rather see them park? In a confined parking lot as opposed to walking on a crowded street and possibly getting hit by a car. It's that simple. And then comes the residents of that neighborhood. Is it right for them to not only have to bear that traffic, but don't forget, on Park Avenue right now, forgetting about Reology and the Jets, they're building a new hotel, a new restaurant, and there's going to be more living, more, what they call, I guess, age restricted living right around the corner. That's going to be a major cut through. We best start addressing the problem now, because to come up with the money to build additional parking on the Board of Ed property is going to be a challenge for the Board of Ed. Their buildings need repair. There's no question about that. Do I agree that people should go to those meetings? Absolutely. Do I agree that we should continue to roll the dice and hope that nobody gets hit on Burnett? Absolutely not. We got to start somewhere. Let's start now, get the kids off that street, and then work with the Board of Ed, hopefully, to get them to provide proper parking.
Landrigan, Mr. Rowe?
Um, thank you. Well, I'm probably the only person here who's had a ton of experience driving up and down Burnett. I was just thinking, probably over a seven year period, I dropped off and picked up my kids about 1,500 times. And that is a scary road with the parking up and down. And it's only gotten worse since my kids left because they were in some of the last small classes in that high school. Last year, that, the parking was all the way down to Chateau Therry. And the last, I don't know, several hundred feet, there's not even a place to walk on the side of the road. You have to walk in the road because there's just bushes and hills. So that is, to me, a serious safety issue. I was never happy with that when I was on the Board of Ed. I always thought, once the MRC was built, we should be able to take advantage of the parking there during the time when the MRC was not really in action, which is during the school day. The MRC, the sporting people should be able to take advantage of the high school parking when they needed it on the weekends or weeknights. And I always thought that either a road or at least a pathway should be erected between the two to solve a lot of problems. I'd be willing to look at what Mr. Harold and Pudas, Harold and Pudas was talking about as a sort of a tertiary thing. But I think actually the better choice, or the best choice really, is to go back to the Board of Ed and look at them, have them expand some of the parking space that they still have between their lot and the road coming in from the MRC. And I think as we get some experience with this, that would be the ideal solution. But I think in the short term, this is, the better solution is still to stop the parking on Burnett and move what we can to the MRC. And one thing, if, if we do find that this is a problem this winter, even though there's an ordinance in place, the police can always declare a parking emergency and allow parking on Burnett again if they really had to, correct? Chief? Okay. Okay. So for some reason, we don't, we cannot get the pathway built? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any, yes, Mr. Catalinello?
But just to be clear, so even as dangerous as Burnett Road is, okay, what we're going to ask these kids to do presumably is to walk on an unlit, snowy, icy, rainy, maybe completed path? Have you ever walked down Burnett? Have you ever walked down Burnett? I'm just saying. I understand that. I'm just saying. So it's, it's not like, you know, it's not like they're taking a stroll on Barbados, you know, on, you know, Sandy Lane in Barbados. And we, we.
Mr. Catalinello, there actually in the memo from Shared Services said there is a lighting in place on a timer using existing lighting.
That's only for our portion. It's not for the portion from where the MRC ends to the high school. So I'm not, again, I'm not at all, I have no, I have no problem at all with us spending the money to build our side of the path because we need it for a variety of reasons. But overall, when we're talking about, talking to the taxpayer, right, we're still going to ask these kids to do a little cross-country hiking, which might not be bad. Maybe they need to get into shape. I know I do. But we're going to ask them to do it before school, potentially in the dead of winter. And who knows if the path will be completed or even cleared.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes, I have a question. And getting back to the point that I was trying to get to earlier, which is that we only have so much control over the situation. Is, is it in our purview to either amend this ordinance or have a resolution where we indicate we understand the implications of this decision and would encourage the Board of Education to resolve it to the satisfaction of the parents of the schools as quickly as possible?
You're referring to ordinance 49-2015?
I am.
How would you, how would you amend the ordinance?
I'm not sure. I just thought of it at the moment, you know. But give me 10 minutes.
Yeah, you can't, that would be material change, this ordinance.
I'm sorry?
That would be material change, I believe, what you're requesting.
All right. So, so could we, is it appropriate to then separately pass a resolution? I'm just, look, the, the object is.
Let's have Mr. Jacoba first and apply on this.
How it's, how it's done is not as material to me as the point, that we've heard the parents, we're acting under what we can act on, which is to say, limit parking in a neighborhood where we feel should be limited.
I, I think that what you're suggesting would be material change. So it not, the ordinance as written should not be amended that way. You could have the liaison, I don't know if there's a liaison to the school.
There is.
There is.
Liaison to the school on behalf of the council, so you have liaisons, could share with the school the thoughts of what you've heard this evening from the various parents, members of the public, and parents of drivers, including other council people, et cetera, and share those concerns with them and then report back. That's would be my recommendation. So that you're not losing, because whether you pass a resolution or you have the liaison do it, you're conveying the same message.
Mr. Landrigan?
I will pass that information along. But I just want to comment too, in regards to the snowy, icy path to the parking lot. If you've ever walked along the asphalt path from the front of the school that goes out to Burnett, that's no piece of cake either. It's not lit. It's on a hill. It's not lit, it's on a hill, it's rough. So either way, it's, actually, the other way would be better in reality, because then when you get to the bottom of that path, you have to go down an unpaved embankment to get onto Burnett, and you have to cut through a gate. So, both of us, by the way...
I could say the sun is yellow and the sky is blue, and I think you disagree with me.
You know, I think we, it's time to conclude, it's time to conclude this conversation. I think what I'm hearing from the council is, we're going to do our part, which we need to do anyway, because we need that concrete sidewalk on that side for a number of reasons, including our stadium seating. We will have ours lit, but we need to have Mr. Landrigan go back to the school board and say that these issues have been raised with us, and it's their half that is going to be the issue going forward. But for the safety of the community, the, the police department is suggesting that we support this ordinance tonight. So I will ask for a vote.
Okay, Mr. Catalonello?
No.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do we need to move it?
No, we did move it.
Much rather.
We did move it, yeah. So we, we are now adopting and finally passed and ask the clerk to publish the notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move forward now with ordinance 50-2015.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $12,800 from the Electric Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of three historic lampposts.
Okay, I'm going to open this hearing for ordinance 50-2015. Anyone in the audience wish to discuss or comment on ordinance 50-2015? Seeing none, we close the hearing. Do I have a motion to move ordinance 50-2015?
I move ordinance 50-2015.
A second?
I will second it.
Thank you. To council discussion? Seeing none, we'll have a vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Thank you. I declare the aforementioned, adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Ordinance 51-2015.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $52,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a vehicle and related equipment for the police department.
Going to open the hearing? Close the hearing? A motion?
I move ordinance 51-2015. I'll second it.
Thank you. Discussion by the council? Okay, we will have a vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare the aforementioned, adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. We are now at the invitation for discussion of any subject matter. Please come forward, state your name for the record, please write your name, and please limit your comments to about three minutes. Seeing none, we'll go on to introduction of ordinances.
The ordinances scheduled for first reading have a hearing date set for Monday, November the 9th, 2015. They'll be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for first reading and ask the borough clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 52-2015, ordinance amending Chapter 34 of the Code of the Borough of Madison entitled Police Department Establishing Promotional Procedures, Promotion Procedures for the Rank of Police Chief, Captain, Lieutenant, and Sergeant, and Establishing a Procedure for Acting Appointments and Hiring Police Officers.
Do I hear a motion to approve 52-2015?
Mayor, I move ordinance 52-2015.
A second.
Madam, Madam Council President, sir.
Sorry.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, can we have a vote?
Mr. Catalonello?
No.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 53-2015.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $30,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of digital fingerprinting system for the police department.
Do I hear a motion?
Madam Council President, I move ordinance 53-2015.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? A vote?
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 54-2015.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 166 of the Borough Code entitled Streets and Sidewalks to Improve Construction Practices for Utility Openings.
Do I hear a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move ordinance 54-2015. A second.
Thank you. Mr. Vogel, is there anything you want to discuss first before we have our discussion on this one?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Discussion by the council. All right, a vote?
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Okay, we will go on to consent agenda resolutions.
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Do I have a motion?
Madam Council President, I move Resolutions R-285-2015 through R-291-2015.
Thank you, a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll have a vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Okay, I don't think there's any unfinished business, so we'll move to approval of the vouchers.
Public Safety, $28,484.29. Health and Public Assistance, $12,355.27. Public Works and Engineering, $153,920.41. Community Affairs, $8,567.41. Finance and Borough Clerk, $3,401,720.62. And Utilities, $257,845.37. The total is $3,862,893.37.
Thank you.
Madam Council President, I move the vouchers.
Thank you, a second?
A second.
Thank you, a vote?
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Okay, I don't think there's any new business?
So with that, I move that we adjourn for the evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Huh? What? Call?
Thanks.
What's wrong?
I have to admit, when we're doing this...
Oh, sure, sure. It's CPR, SAVR.
It's just like...
It's what it looks like.
It's a complication.
Yeah, I mean, you can, but, no, it wasn't that.